...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia posted to CPS website for interested community members to access and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Policy. Anyone speaking tonight during the public input portion of the meeting is notified to Superintendent's Office of the desire to speak and be provided with these guidelines. On request, written comments received no later than 12:00 PM on the day of this meeting will also be read and made part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment session. So welcome to this meeting of the Chelmsford School Committee. Our first order of business is to approve our minutes from our meeting on August 5th.
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting from August 5th of 2025.
Second.
You got it. You were there this time.
Right, everybody was there, right? Okay, any corrections on the minutes? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five zero. All right, any good news to share?
Yeah, good news. So the teachers are back in the schools, starting to set up because we opened it up for them and tomorrow and on Thursday we have new teacher orientation.
Wow.
Right, anybody else? All right, I'm sure next time we meet we'll have even more good news.
Yes.
All right, nobody's here to speak, so we can move on to new business.
Sure. Yeah, we'll jump right into a little update for our return to school for 25, 26. Tonight's meeting, as I looked historically, is not a typically long meeting. It's just an opportunity for us to kind of touch base before the school year really starts. We talked a little bit about student enrollment, some of our transportation for the year, highlight some of the capital projects that we completed over the summer. So I'll just walk you through that information this evening. And then when we get back together next in September, we'll really start to kind of hone in on our, you know, the regular running of the district, but our goals and objectives and things like that for the school year. So that will start immediately when we come into September. So this is our district enrollment. This is consistent with what you've seen previously. It's just our little internal tracking sheet to kind of monitor the enrollment grade to grade within the schools. So overall, we're looking at about 51, 20 as far as our total enrollment. And this is just based on yesterday's numbers. We do get a little bit of fluctuation over the first couple of weeks in school. Obviously in August, we always kind of wait until after August 1st because if we do have individuals in town, like leasing and things like that, the leases erupt, people move in. So we start to see the numbers fluctuate a little bit. But this is the numbers that we're using to begin the school year. And then after we hit the October 1 numbers, those are kind of the official numbers we use as a district. I'll report back to you on that. Other than that, if there were any significant, you know, increases or decreases, I'll flag that for you. At the elementaries and the middle schools, obviously, because we know the number of home rooms that they have, it's not quite like the high school where they have an actual schedule and kids are taking classes based on, you know, their interests and electives and core and things like that. It's harder to produce. When we do our true October 1 report later in the fall, I will include the high school numbers like we have previously. But for right now, this just gives you a sense of number-wise where we're at, how many sections we're opening the school year up at each grade level. I will say, just because I'm sure someone will ask, and I had talked to Joanna about this previously, we're really not seeing significant enrollment from the West Campus. I forget the name of it, but from the West Campus site, we only have four students who have registered in total from that development to date. So we have a pre-K student over at Chips. We have two students at Harrington, I believe one's third grade, one is first grade. So it's not even like they're in the same grade. And then we have a ninth grader at the high school. So we're really, we're not negatively impacted at all, or any more than, you know, any other developments in town by that housing complex. But we are obviously tracking the address and we'll keep an eye on that in case things change as they continue to more fully enroll.
Do we know how much rental they've?
I don't. No. If and when, like, we talk with them, if they ever, you know, call or whatnot, we can just inquire as to like what their capacity is. But I don't think they have to share with us. I don't see why they wouldn't. But I do know that they're still actively leasing, but we've only had the four so far. So I knew that would be a question, but I just wanted to kind of head that one off. But it's not negatively, again, impacting us. In our elementary schools, you know, our numbers are in the high teens, low twenties. You know, we try to for, you know, K1 and 2, obviously have those be in the 22, 23-ish range. When we hit third and fourth grade, we go up as high as 25. It's hard, you know, we don't have any schools that have over five sections. Five is kind of the max for us. And typically, again, that happens when our enrollment is approaching that hundred dollar, not hundred dollar, the hundred student count is when we consider adding a section. The one section that surprised me a little bit when we had started the year was kindergarten at Byham. You can see that number is actually the third lowest at 89 as of yesterday. After the spring enrollment, they were actually projected to go into the 100-plus mark. So I don't exactly know what's happening with that. I'd authorized them to have a fifth section at the time. And it's honestly just, even though, you know, they don't necessarily need it right now, it's too difficult to pull out of the schedule and have them go back to having just the four sections. It would just be too disruptive. So we're going to monitor that for the school year. Byham is, again, the school that's been pretty consistently running at around the 100 students, so I would not be surprised as we get closer to September if that increases. If that ever actually stayed, you know, below 90, then if we were going to make an adjustment, we would consider an adjustment for the following year. But we wouldn't do it after the school year gets started and the kids get situated in classes. And then at the middle school level, Parker and McCarthy, McCarthy has about, I don't know why I listed that one first because that's seventh and eighth grade, but they have about 800 students over there at McCarthy. And then Parker has about 840. We did have them add a kind of a flex section for this year and fifth because fourth going to fifth were our biggest numbers. And so that will kind of bubble up next year. It's anticipated to sixth. And then we will see how it actually will impact things when we get to seventh and eighth grade at McCarthy. But that's why you see 18 home rooms instead of 16 over at Parker for fifth grade.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Are those new hires or are those teachers that had been moved from another grade that was no longer?
No, so those, anytime we have that, particularly that grade level, we just post them as like one-year interim positions. So they're a regular permanent teacher for the year. They have all the credentialing and everything. But we just do them as one-year positions. So then next year, if they move up to sixth grade, we would re-advertize those positions. Those individuals may or may not be interested in sixth grade. They might look at, say, other opportunities in the district. But we would post, again, likely for two positions for sixth grade. And then it would wash out afterward. But I'm happy to take any questions you may have on the numbers. Again, this is something we monitor closely. We'll continue to do that. And if I ever saw any significant spikes, that obviously we'll adjust and then I would report to you.
Questions? Mine is just with the chart, just the numbers, like, if you look at the numbers, like, say, just look at this one, the top line, Chelmsford Public Schools, seventh grade, 406, and enrollment at McCarthy is 402. And then same thing with the eighth grade, 405, and 399. Same thing on the bigger chart. So the numbers underneath the top line are... If you look at your first chart, too, same thing.
Maybe I didn't carry a formula through.
Yeah, I don't.
He's never gonna look, he's never gonna forget this.
Not exactly the same.
I'm disappointed in myself.
No, I just, I just noticed in the main chart.
I didn't know if there were students that were somehow not listed. Yeah, I was curious.
Oh, goodness.
What number of grades that does it happen?
All right, I think we'll just wrap it up now.
Good catch. None of them match.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go take a peek at that. Obviously, it's off by a couple kids. There must be something with the formula line that I'm not grabbing. But when I come off the projection, I can pull up the spreadsheet and I can tell you quickly where it is.
Okay. Not a huge change, just wondering. Any other questions on enrollment?
I have the same one as you.
Appreciate you calling me out for that.
I just noticed it.
Short meeting, Jay. We're gonna be all right.
It's less kids, so.
You see, Linda, you're finding the highlight.
I am.
This is your chance to tell us that AI did it.
Sadly, Maria, this was me.
This is your chance.
We'll make that, we'll make that correction. Transportation, Joanna, do you want to just touch on your transportation numbers?
We have, in a typical year, 3,400 students ride the bus. And we have 29 buses running the three tiers, you know, that they do the high school run and the middle school run and then the elementary run. 3,194 students have registered to ride the bus. And we mailed out the bus passes August 15th. That was the number that Friday. And then just a reminder, all students must register to ride the bus even if there is no fee. We need to know who you are and so we can get you your bus stop and your bus pass. Over to the right is how many people registered in June, which was a nice big chunk, 2,110.
Good number.
And then in July, and then August. But we know, you know, approximately 200 or more students still need to register before next Tuesday. That's crunch time.
Any questions?
Is that a better number than last year?
I was just curious.
Doing better each year.
Right, about the same.
This is great.
And all the pickup drop-off times are the same. We, I know, we changed from McCarthy, Parker, that's awesome.
Yeah, the school sat and stop changes didn't change this year. We changed them, what was it, two years ago?
Yeah.
When we did the realignment, we had to shift the schools by like 10 minutes, but nothing has changed this year. It's the same as last year.
Thank you.
Good. And then we'll just touch on some of the capital projects that we actually either completed or are underway for this year. Starting at the middle schools, several of the schools, or five of them in total, we're having those secure entries built out. So we're in pretty good shape overall with regard to those. There are many components to them, but the two biggest components, like, from the public perspective, all five of them have interior vestibule areas that have been built out. So those are just about complete. I've got to go check on a couple tonight after we leave here. They were at, like, paint and things along those lines. So the inside is good. Three of the schools, the Parker, the Harrington, and... No, that's Center. Parker, Harrington, what's the other school?
Byham.
Byham. Parker, Harrington, and Byham also have the front storefront. And a little section window has to be replaced and taken out. That is going to recur next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So by the time we get into the Labor Day weekend, by the time we get back from that four-day weekend, it should be 99% complete. We might just have, like, a little bit of touch-up paint and things like that. But Center and South Row did not have to have any external work done, so those should be pretty much complete by Friday. So I'll report back. I'll share some pictures the next time we get together at the meetings. But I'm very happy with how those are coming along. They've been turned over to Bill and Technology at this point because he's got to integrate all of the access control and cameras have already been installed. So that'll all actually work out nicely. But over the next two weeks, that should be really fine-tuned. At Parker, we also installed a split AC air conditioning system in the teacher's room, which, again, will be welcomed. Typically, that's in the springtime. You know how the buildings get a little hot during the springtime? That'll be, I think, a welcomed addition over there. On a positive note, the long-term projection for forecast over the next couple of weeks is actually pretty reasonable. So that's good for our staff and students coming back to school. It won't be too, too hot in the buildings. At Parker, we also did install some acoustical panels in the band and orchestra room.
Those things hide everywhere, man. Ten years, we still find those things and remove them. It's great.
No, this, we're putting these in, in the ceilings.
Oh, these went in?
Yeah, this we actually want to put in. It's the accordion walls we want to take out.
Yeah, the accordion walls we want out.
So the acoustical panels, it's just to help with the sound reverberation and things like that. So those went in over there. And then at, well, here's your walls, John. At McCarthy, we removed two of the permanent walls. We talked about this when we did the Capitol for the year. But there are four remaining. Two are upstairs, two are downstairs because of the bidding timelines and requirements. We were only able to do two. So we did the two that are actually on the second floor of the building in anticipation that next summer is likely when the elevator will be replaced at McCarthy. And we'll be able to access the first floor without needing the elevator, but not the second floor. So on next year's list, you'll likely see the last two accordion walls at McCarthy being proposed to come, turned into permanent walls. And again, it's nice where it's on the first floor. We don't need the elevator for that work. So there was some thought that went into that. The SRO's office, when you walk in on the left, it used to kind of have a half wall. So now it's kind of fully built out to be an office just for privacy and things like that. So that was a welcomed addition. They rebuilt the interior ramp in the building down in the nurse's office. It was kind of getting a little spongy. It had a little bit too much play to it. So the Town DPW guys did a very nice job rebuilding that. Brian helped them with some of the overlay on the top. Gary Persicetti, actually, who'd retired, who's come back to kind of oversee a few projects, did some work over at McCarthy upgrading the electrical switchgear. So the electrical service to the building is original. And, you know, you always kind of fear that, you know, the power's going to go out and you can't get the piece to get it back on. So the town has been proactively addressing some of the switchgear and doing maintenance and switching it out. So that happened this summer at McCarthy. I think they're gonna probably try to do almost like a school a year. And when they did that, they also replaced the electrical panels. So kind of a full electric upgrade over at McCarthy, which is great. At the same time, in the boiler room, they replaced the boilers. So those boilers really had to be replaced. They were on their last leg. And so really, now heating should be excellent at the high school. I do believe the McCarthy boilers were the last set of big boilers we had to do. We did the high school a summer ago. So from a heating perspective, we're really in good shape in all the schools at this point. If you see at the beginning of McCarthy or the front of McCarthy, they have the giant island. Parking's always been an issue at McCarthy, not only for parents, but even to access, like, the police department, the community room, or if you happen to be, if you ever go there for, like, a play or a performance, you just can never have enough parking. So they actually, pretty creatively, they cut into the island in the front, and it was either 42 or 43 new parking spaces that they created. So it'll be great for, like, parents, if you're coming in quickly to a meeting, you don't have to park out in the back and come into the front. It'll be helpful for, like, after-hours shows, performances. Even the police department, if they happen to be hosting an event at the community center, it's closed and you can kind of walk over. So that got completed this year through the help of the Town DPW. That was a welcomed addition. And then if you've driven by McCarthy recently, I wish it would have started about a month ago, but they are pretty deep into the renovation of the sports space. So the basketball, the street hockey, the tennis, pickleball combo, they're deep in work at this point. All the safety fencing is up. They've actually cut out the new sidewalk that's going to be going in, and they're doing all the leveling. It looked to me like they're pretty close to the hot top going in. So I would imagine over the next two or three weeks, a lot of that work will get buttoned up. And there is a nice little walkway that they're integrating, a little play area for, like, families and things like that. We talked about when the committee met. So that, again, the entire project will be done before, you know, the first frost and things like that this fall. But that's going to look very nice when it's done. And that'll be another nice recreational area for the town. The school will use it during the day, but residents can use it in the evening. Any questions in particular about the two middle schools?
Just more of a general question. The new front entry vestibules, are each one going to have an individual person assigned to it? I know, like, at the high school there is, and obviously McCarthy, yes, because of separate, or is it?
No. So the nice thing about these five is they're actually, the window goes right into the main office. So the secretary was already sitting there. And it was just a bigger window. So we've actually standardized the window size of them all. But the staff was already on the other side of the wall.
Okay.
So it was like McCarthy, unfortunately, someone had to be stationed there. And then the high school, because of the different location, they had to. But at the other five schools, the check-in window is basically the new window. So the staff is already there. So no one has to, no one has to move. So that'll actually be much more seamless.
I do have a quick question. I heard from a parent who was at the tour today at Parker. I think they had school tours for some of the new coming kids. That there was leaking in the gym. Is there a serious roof issue happening at Parker that you're aware of?
I haven't heard about that.
Okay. Was it a very concerned parent that there was imminent disaster happening in the gym at Park? Apparently, that was what she said. She said on the tour, they went to the gym and there was leaking coming from the roof.
I'll find out why, because to be honest with you, it really hasn't rained lately, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if it would be a pipe or something. I'm just, yeah. I was just curious if we had a known issue that was going on, but...
Unknown to me, but I will certainly, certainly find out for you.
We're quarter.
Yeah, no, we'll take a look when I'm, I gotta hit Parker anyway, so I'll take a peek and see if there's anything on the ground. I'll shoot you an email, just a follow-up.
Yeah.
All right, so then if we take a peek at the elementary schools, a lot of consistent themes here. So Byham, again, that front entry, secure vestibule area. Byham had the library renovation this summer. If you recall, last summer, we did Harrington. So Bill's able to kind of do a school a year. Looks beautiful. I was over there yesterday. Really came out very nice. So they're getting that all set up. But it was complete new furnishings and lighting and paint. And it really looks like a great space for the kids. And then you'll see this consistent theme, too. All the elementary schools have had the gymnasium basketball hoops motorized. So the hoops and baskets used to always just be at, like, a standard height. But when you have the little guys, and I forget exactly what they call them for the little leagues that they play, but you need to lower the baskets for them. So now they're all motorized. So it's much safer that they can actually just use the regular rims. You don't have to use portable rims and things like that. So all the basketball hoops have been motorized.
Mini mites, I think is what they call them, the mini mites.
Mini mites? It very well could be.
I had no idea. Just learned something new. That's great.
Yeah, so that'll be, so that'll be...
So I could possibly dunk.
I don't know. It's still at least eight or nine feet. I'm not, I'm not sure. Well, maybe with a little boost, we can get you up there. Center Elementary School, the front entry, again, security. Now, that's a completely different look than all the other schools just because of the lobby there. So when you get a chance, you know, gladly take anyone over there, take a peek at it. But it was a very nice kind of three-quarter wall that was constructed at the top of the stairs. And then we had to reconfigure the entrance, the doorway to the office, and the window of the office got moved to the backside of the hall. So that when you come up, there's now just, like, kind of the secure entry to check into. You get buzzed into the main building, and you have to access the office through the back corridor. So that was a bit of construction work that had to take place there, but it really is...
Did they have to put a, like, there was a ramp and stairs. Did they have to put a wall?
Yep. So there's a wall actually going right across the top. So you can still access the rear and board the stairs.
Yeah, but you can't get further than that without...
Correct. You have to go over to the window, get buzzed in. But we also didn't want to have just the office door there.
Yeah.
So we moved the office door to the back of the wall.
Ooh.
So now there's just a window there. So you can have your service and then you can come into the school for your business. So just a different design than there was in the other buildings.
Yeah, I can imagine that being pretty involved.
Yeah, but that one, that is actually coming out nicely. They also, which really looked nice. So they, I know this is a small thing sometimes to people, but the window shades in the building were really old and dilapidated, ripped. They didn't always work the way the teachers probably intended them to. So the entire building this year, Brian worked with the contractor and did complete new installation of window shades through the building. It looks wonderful, so.
At Center, that's actually a necessity.
At Center.
That front side is the solar.
Yes.
Effect of the heat coming in.
Yeah, you get a lot of sun.
So the shades make a big difference.
Yeah, so take a peek at those when they're over there. I think everyone is very happy with them. And they're very easy to maneuver, too. So they're going to be durable for the long term. And Dennis is going to be able to play basketball in that gym as well. So that's good. Over at Harrington, again, we have the front entry being finished up now. The gymnasium floor, that's, interestingly enough, that's one of our hardwood gym floors. We don't have a lot of those. Most of them are the poured rubber floors, but that was the hardwood floor. Had a little bit of damage last year. So over the summer, that was completely refinished. It was stripped down, sanded down, refinished, repainted, restripped. Looks really nice. That came out excellent. And they have the basketball hoops being motorized. South Row, same. So the front entry vestibule. This isn't quite as elaborate as Center's just because of the hallway. But basically, they also had a wall that was constructed across the main corridor. So when you're going to come in, you're going to check in, and then you're going to come in a door to get into the building. So that looked, looked very nice as well. They also got a new split AC system in the teacher's room, so the teachers will be happy about that. And a handful of the water bubbles at the school had been already converted to, like, bottle filling stations. So now the back half of the school was as well. Again, a small thing, but over there, they really like it for the kids. And their basketball hoops were motorized. Any questions, I'm sorry, on the elementary schools?
I would just like to commend you for using the word bubbler. I think that is a legitimate term for, it's a bubbler. But no, if you're outside...
Not anymore, it's not. Now it's a bottle filler.
It depends where you're from, but thank you.
Now it's a bottle filler.
At the elementary schools, do they foresee any problems, like, in the morning when all the kids come in, now they have a smaller area to get into the building? Like, so, say at Center School, they had the double doors in both places?
Yeah, I know. Because, like, even at Center School, kids actually, if you're a bus, you stay on the bus, you went around the back of the school, and you came in one of the side doors anyway. There were a handful, like, parent drop-offs at the front door, but it's really not going to be significant. They still have the same exterior door that they had. It's just the interior door is now single. But it basically, whatever your outside door is, it matches your interior door. So if you had a single door, you have a single on the inside. If you had a double door, we built a double on the inside.
Okay.
So for fire code, you have to do that?
That's true. It was only a single door to get in anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna bottle that.
So it's still the same door.
Yeah, it really should be fine. Did you have something?
No, I'm just envisioning it in my mind.
Yeah, and again, if you want to take a ride, I'm happy to show you.
This is great.
And I'm happy with how they're...
This is really great. For these updates on the vestibules, that was part of our plan for, you know, the security systems and so on.
Yep.
I think you had the team return and update that, that study that was done?
Yeah, so it was about three years ago that we had the Davis Group come in and help us do, like, an initial assessment of the district, safety, security, all the planning piece of it. And they gave us a bunch of recommendations. You know, they liked how we actually had done the secure entrance at the high school. They identified, and we kind of knew we needed to do something with the radio system. We didn't have a unified radio system across the district, so we have that. So they gave us a bunch of recommendations. And then we actually had them come back this spring before we built out the five new vestibule areas, to take a look at the two we already had, to take a look at the way they function, to also help us just kind of standardize and streamline the whole screening process of the school. So if you present as a parent or visitor, you know, you're going to be greeted with the same script whether you come into Center, or you go into McCarthy. You know, they're going to do some work with our own staff around, you know, we're very fortunate that, you know, most people that come to the school have a true purpose for being there. We don't have any issues even when we run the license. But if you ever did, you know, how are you going to respond? So they're going to help us with some PD. They also came back to observe our Alice safety drills this springtime because it's nice to have a third party who's not associated with either the schools. Or, you know, like, the police and fire are wonderful to work with. Sometimes you do just get too familiar seeing the drills because it's common to you. So having a third party come in and debrief is helpful. They actually came to our leadership, our administrative retreat this summer and did a whole exercise with the building administrators around what they kind of saw this spring, things to think about for improvements for this coming year. They'll come back and do some more observations. So they've been a good partner, and they're a group that we're going to keep on to consult with on the security front.
Okay, good.
Yep.
That's important. I'm glad we did this.
Yeah, they're very good. And they're always welcoming and eager to, even if you wanted to have an executive session at some point and talk about some of the security stuff. We wouldn't do it in a public format, but you could do it in a private setting and have a meeting to just talk about exactly what some of our upgrades have been and what our response protocols are. So you feel very comfortable with what we're doing.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you for the update. That's super.
Yeah, no, no problem. And then at the high school, our last school, we did a complete, had anticipated it was going to be this, but we ended up getting into a lot more work than we thought about when we were doing the athletic trainer room renovation. It actually involved some underground plumbing, again, that we weren't anticipating, but came up beautiful. They're putting all the finishing touches on that now. So that's going to be a great space for our athletes and our training staff as they're working with all the different student athletes. The paved classroom got a complete overhaul at the high school. So that classroom is one of our special education classrooms. It had the kitchen, so it had a couple of stoves and, you know, the dishwashers and refrigerators and things like that, as well as some classroom space. So that area got completely gutted, you know, new floors, walls painted, you know, ceiling lights. They got all brand-new kitchen cabinetry, appliances that actually just got installed yesterday. So the paved classroom looks great. The staff are very excited about that. I can't wait to see the kids when they come back. And then also, one of the things, appearance-wise, I think, could really jump out to you when you pull up to the high school. All the metal facade of the building has been painted, the true maroon color. It had been just kind of faded and deteriorated. And over the years, you actually saw, like, some of the blue that was under the red even peeling through in certain areas. So we had a company come in and paint the entire, anything maroon on the outside of the high school, and it really pops. So when you pull up to the high school now, it, all the grates and any of the metal work is freshly painted. So it really looks excellent. And then last, I mean, Bill, obviously, in technology, was very involved with all the secure entry spaces because once it's physically built, he's got to put all the technology in to make it work. And then we also did the enhanced kind of safety clock intercom security pilot at Harrington this summer. So this may serve as a pilot for the district. This is an integrated clock intercom in every classroom with an LED display. You know how when we did the Alice alerts, we had certain ones, like, in the gym or the calf, based on, like, loud noises and things? He now has it, like, integrated through the hallways as well as in each of the different classrooms. So we wanted to pick a school that was close for us, you know, so that we could actually kind of monitor the project, but test this new system before we would think about rolling it out to the rest of the district. But that went very well. And we can also go over to Harrington someday, and you can see a little test of that system. But his staff was, they did the installation themselves. But his staff was, they did the installation themselves, so they were very busy over there at Harrington this summer doing that amount of work. I think one of the things that we would have to think about is if we were to blow this out and expand it to additional schools, I don't know that they would have the bandwidth to necessarily do it all themselves, and we would just have to figure out how to best do that. But he's very happy with how it's coming along so far, so we can definitely do a little test on that at some point. A test, have you come over and visit it so you can see it.
Right.
So that kind of in a nutshell are the highlights.
Any questions on Capitol or anything else?
Yeah, good work.
So we're ready, we're ready to open?
We are ready for the staff, as Linda mentioned, we have orientation tomorrow and Thursday for all the new teachers in the district. And then Monday, we have a full orientation day directly to the schools, all the staff are going to report back, do a little bit of building-based kickoff, PD in the buildings, classroom setup, you know, work with your colleagues, and then the kids are coming on Tuesday, so we're excited about that. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have kids in the buildings, and then we'll break for the four-day Labor Day weekend and come back at it the following Tuesday, regular schooling. So when we meet that Tuesday night, we'll let you know how the first week went, but I'm excited to get all the kids back and get back into the fall routine.
Great.
Is this my perception, I may be wrong, but it seems like this year we have less new staff than we did last year? New teachers, about the same number?
I think it's maybe slightly less, not markedly, maybe by like four or five.
About the same.
But it's been pretty similar, you know, each, each year. One thing I did not mention on the, on the staffing front, because I didn't have a slide on this, but overall, we're doing well staffing. We had a job fee today, I haven't heard the exact results, but we always have a few last-minute like paraprofessionals or lunch and recess aides to hire, and we were able to get a bunch last summer by having a job fee like right as this summer got started, so we'll get some feedback on that. We were fully staffed last week, but we ended up having two resignations right at the tail end of last week, so there was not anything I could anticipate. So we do have two openings, we're still actively trying to fill classroom teacher-wise for the start of the school year. Actively posting, actively interviewing, but those are the last two professional positions we have to fill. Everything else is filled, and we're looking forward to meeting all the staff tomorrow, the new staff at orientation.
Were you able to get a new vice principal from McCarthy, or?
No, so that's, that's the third. When I said professional, I was thinking more teaching staff, so we have.
Ministry is unprofessional.
Minister, they're very professional, but they weren't in my mix. So we have the AP at McCarthy, that's still hanging out there, they're doing additional interviews this week. We have a seventh-grade science teacher at McCarthy, and we have a math-science teacher, sixth grade at Parker. Those are our three, I guess, full professional openings. Everything else has been hired and accounted for, and we're ready to roll.
Any questions on personnel, or?
All right, great. Thank you, and again, we'll, we'll report out how the first week goes after we get the staff and students back, but we're going to have a great year, and we're looking forward to it.
All right. Any liaison reports, I wouldn't think so. Anybody have any upcoming meetings, eh?
Not yet, not yet.
I have started noting the dates of the first PTO meetings of the year, but.
You know, we have building committee Thursday night, so.
You got to do my personnel report.
We just did, didn't we?
No. Didn't we?
Yeah, we just went over it.
Oh, right, okay. I didn't really say it was a report, I thought you were, I was just talking.
No, we are, we are. Anybody, questions on personnel report?
No?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so we have a meet Thursday night for the building committee.
Yeah, Thursday, yeah, we, building committee Thursday, and then we were talking a little before the meeting. Next Tuesday, we have the designer selection panel, that's when we're going to narrow down the six applicants to likely two or three, and then in two weeks from then, we actually have the selection meeting with the MSBA. So by the time, probably our second meeting in September comes around, we'll be able to say who the designer for the project is going to be, and then right, you know, early October, we're going to be jumping full steam ahead into the planning.
Wonderful.
All right, any new items people have?
It's not really a new item for tonight, but I just wanted to express my interest in potentially as a group, talking at some point in the next couple of months about whether there are, so I know we've talked about smartphones and things like that, but the other side of technology, AI, is something I've been spending the last couple of months focused on quite a bit, and I would love to have some conversations about if there's any immediate implications around AI policies. I know the state and the commissioner's newsletter that went out yesterday had some guidance for educators, but I've seen in other spaces that there has been very little in terms of guidance for policymakers, and that being said, I have been looking into what is out there around it, and I do think there are some things we may want to consider as sort of baby steps on the policy side around AI in our schools, so I'd love to have that discussion in the near future. I did my day job, we had a two-day conference around AI in schools that I was branding with the job, and I was mostly there as a learner, and I was able to sit in on a few sessions that were specifically focused on policy. It was aimed at Massachusetts educators, but most of them were from a little east of us, and I left with a lot of good resources and ideas that I'm happy to talk through, including some suggested activities for school committees to do together to help them figure out what they feel like their communities need in terms of policy around the issue.
Has the task force, the governor's task force issued recommendations? I haven't seen those come out yet.
That's what came out yesterday.
But it was just a limited thing, right?
Is that what this is? Right, so that, that came out yesterday, it was, I don't know if you made a different one, but the commissioner's one focused on education, they had a task force that met through, last year they are seeking new people to be part of a second iteration of the task force that will be more focused on kind of actionable classroom-based kind of steps to take, but, yeah, I definitely know this is, this is definitely being talked about at a lot of levels, but I do think, I'm not saying we definitely need a policy, I am saying it would be worth having the conversation.
So, yeah, so I do get the commissioner's weekly newsletter, and there were two links, one for the policies and one just for educators that were noteworthy to me, so I've downloaded them and saved them so I can read them, because I think it's things we need to know more about.
MASK has stopped short of recommending any policies, I did read up on what MASK said about it, but you can find some examples of what some districts have done, a lot of them have added to, like, pointed to the existing policies that feel relevant, so, you know, instead of creating a whole new policy around AI, they would point to specific existing clauses in their existing policy handbook that are relevant to AI, or maybe adding a little to it, for example, around intellectual property, student privacy, around academic integrity, there may, you know, there may be ways in which we could be explicit about the AI implications, or just say explicitly that those apply to this context.
How about at the federal level? I think there's an executive order, right, on education, and, yeah, pretty sure there is, so I don't know what that implication is too, I think we'd have to think about that, they were going to be, I think it was actually more funding supposedly going to be available if you did integrate more AI into the schools, so I think we'd have to look at that too, both the state and the federal, yeah.
Right, I know Bill's been doing work on this, you know, in the background, so.
Yeah, Bill, I know there's been different documents that have floated back and forth, but I mean, over the next, you know, few meetings, I'm sure we can put something on to have an initial talk about like where we're at and where we potentially can go short-term even.
Yeah, I mean, it might be nice to hear if anything has come up from the staff about, you know, specific concerns that may have policy implications, I think that would be really helpful for us to at least be apprised of that, and then we could determine, you know, where we need to go next in terms of thinking about it.
All right, any other new items people have? I just had a, you know, a question, have we heard back from that private school that came before, well, we had paperwork come before us a couple of weeks ago, I know they're still advertising, but I assume that they would try to get everything in line for at least this meeting, and, you know, and.
I did, I did too. No, so after the meeting where we, I think it was two meetings ago, we put the application on, I had given you some feedback after like my initial review of like what we should be asking for as follow-up, I conveyed that to the, to the school's director. They indicated that they would certainly address each of the comments of each of the areas that had to be done. They had indicated also that they should have all of their sign-offs and licenses